I didn't think that we're approving this, at least if we want to say we're approving it, we're approving it conditionally on these two items. And I am assuming, and I may be wrong, that we're endorsing it so that the planning department can look at it and advise us whether it meets the criteria. Because I was at the meeting and I heard a lot of, pretty much some of the things that Constable Helmer talked about, that it doesn't really meet the criteria. So if we're going to talk about council policy, I don't know why we wouldn't want to change the policy or talk about changing the policy. Now, if we're going to endorse it, and that's why I didn't quite understand what endorse means with respect to approving. Can somebody help me with that?
If I may, Counselor. This is a highly unusual situation, and it's a crisis across the country. And what we talked about at the Planning Committee was that this is not a land use planning decision. This is not a zoning decision. That will come through the proper process. What this is, is an endorsement based on a council policy that we've already approved in advance of any kind of planning discussions. And our audience really is the other levels of government, so that they understand that in principle, this council, based on our council policy outside of the Planning Act and outside of any zoning changes, recognize these as potential sites. So it's really an endorsement in principle that Dr. Mackey was looking for as he works through the application process.
I really appreciate that explanation, because that's what I thought also. And I'm very sympathetic with the requirements for this. What I'm concerned about, though, is that when this goes to planning, can planning say to us, you have to turn it down because it does not meet the planning act? And I'm a little concerned about going here now and then something like that happens. So maybe Mr. Fleming could ease my feeling about that.
Mr. Fleming.
Your worship, I think it's very important that council, if they move forward with B, is very clear that this is just with respect to the council policy and that it is a response to the inquiry of the Middlesex London Health Unit. It does not in any way make any judgment on a future planning application. It should not be considered to do so. And that there will be a full planning application process relating to either of these sites for a zoning amendment, if the Health Unit decides to move forward on that basis. And that process should not be considered to be in any way tied to this directly. And that there should be a full process and the evaluation criteria of the policies that you'll be looking at and perhaps establishing May 14th and the council meeting thereafter, that that process is not confused at all with this process, which is simply an answer back to the Health Unit on whether the sites that they've identified in the opinion of council meet the council policy in the council policy menu.
So, Mr. Chair, through you, both of you. What I'm hearing, though, is that there's a strong possibility that this could go through the planning process and it could be, it could come back to us that with a suggestion that we refuse it based on the planning process because it does not meet the criteria, the zoning criteria and so on. It's possible. They could say, well, because it meets the policy, you can approve it. But it can also say that, yes, it meets your policy, but it doesn't meet the zoning requirement. Is that what I'm hearing?
If I can go to Mr. Fleming.
That's correct. The two processes are not directly linked. And you're going to see, as I said, May 14th, the official plan policies under the Planning Act and the zoning regulations. And some of those differ in some ways from the council policy. And there are additional considerations relating to built form. So as I said, I think it's important to recognize that this is not directly linked to the Planning Act application that might come forward in the future.
Okay, I have no additional speakers. Let's deal with A, C, and D, separate from this discussion. And we'll circle back to B once we deal with that. So if there are no additional speakers, I will open the vote. Let's open the vote. Okay, my screen is frozen, so I'll vote manually, yea.
Counselor Van Hooft? Counselor Armstrong? Counselor Saleh?
That's a yea.
Or Ash, Mark Park. Yea. Closing the vote and the motion carries, 12 with two recused.
And I'll put B on the floor endorsing the two sites under our policies.
I'm just going to leave the chair for him, and I'll ask Counselor Morgan if you take the chair, please.
Mayor Brown. Thank you very much, Mr. Presiding Officer. Colleagues, I'm just going to speak briefly to this. We had a very lengthy discussion about this at Planning Committee, and I hope that many of you had an opportunity to review the tapes. What this is, is really an order of operations in an exceptional circumstance. People are dying across the country. 400 people have died in our community over the past 10 years. People have died, many people have died in London this year. We led the charge in our province when we opened our first temporary overdose prevention site in January of this year. We were the first in Ontario, and we're continuing to respond to this community need. What this is, is a request from our Chief Medical Officer of Health to endorse in principle a couple of sites outside of the Planning Act in alignment with the council policy that we've already recommended, that we've already approved ourselves, so that he can put his best foot forward with his application process. This will be subject to the planning process. This will be subject to public participation, and this will be subject to all of the steps that would be necessary in a zoning application process, in an official plan process. This is outside of that. And so really, this is an endorsement in principle. Dr. Mackey was very clear that this was very important for the application process. And we spent a good deal of time at committee talking about this. So what I'd ask is that you trust the work of the committee. And we did. We did our due diligence, and it is my hope that this recommendation passes. I will split it, while I'll say this in the chair. We'll do B1, B2 on the different sites in case there's some concern about that. But please, recognize your committee treated this extremely seriously this past week.
I have Counselor Armstrong next, and I'll pass the chair back to Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I just want to let you know, I certainly support what we're doing now. And we're doing our best, obviously, trying to find appropriate site, et cetera. And I support the process. But I'd be remiss if I didn't stand and say that I only wish we would have, this was detected years earlier, this problem, this crisis. Now we're in total crisis. This is something that should have been detected years ago, or at least a few years back, because what we're doing now, we could have been doing earlier. That's my belief. I don't know how our community and our country ended up in this crisis. And I certainly hope that our federal government will look at this issue and provincial government and try to figure out exactly why we ended up in this situation. So I just wanted to say that, I've said it before at committee, it's unfortunate because I think a lot of people may have needlessly died, that there could have been earlier intervention, and then how did we end up with this epidemic? Thank you.
Any other speakers? Counselor Helmer?
I'm just going to rise on a point of information to point out why it was not possible to do something like this in the past. From 2016 until 2000, oh, sorry, 2006 to 2015, we had a federal government in power that actively blocked the exemption process for supervised consumption services. There was one that was operating in Vancouver, Insight, and the process for getting exemption was extremely difficult, was very onerous, and there's legislation passed to make it more difficult. There were no exemptions granted in that period. So, you know, it wasn't possible before. It is possible now.
Other speakers before we go to the Vice Chair. Vice Chair Hopkins.
Thank you. I know there was a request to separate the two sites. I'm not sure if we're going to be doing that.
Yeah, actually, I just heard from the person that made that request that he's comfortable with them being included together, so we can deal with B in its totality unless there are other, nope, we deal with all of B.
Okay, so I'll put B on the floor. And I would like to, once again, Okay, so I'll put B on the floor and I would like to, once again, thank the committee. We had a long, hard discussion on this and the committee debated and coming up with the, hopefully, the right solution to address the need in our community.
Okay, if there are no additional speakers, in a moment, I'm going to ask that the vote be opened. Let's open the vote.
Counselor Armstrong. Counselor Sully, yes.
So, yea.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 10 to 2 with 2 recused.
Your worship, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Eighth Committee, Eighth Report of the Community and Protective Services Committee. We'll go to the chair, Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. I haven't heard from any of my colleagues. Okay, Counselor Turner, put his hand up.
Thank you, your worship. In my rush to get into my chair here, I missed a couple of recusals as well. 3.3 with respect to the Adult Live Entertainment Parlour License Location Substitution Request. The health unit does inspections on these facilities, so I will recuse for that purpose. And 4.3, the Opioid Prices Working Group update, again, that's from my direct supervisor, so I will recuse there.
Okay, so we'll deal with 8, 3.3, and 11, 4.3 separately. Any others? Okay, going to deal with the balance?
Okay, I'll put the balance on the floor and I just have a few comments on some of the things that happened at committee last week, some things that might be of interest. Item 2 on the council agenda for the Eighth Report was the London's homeless prevention system and it was good news. It was an increase in funding from the other levels of government and one thing that Counselor Helmer very helpfully pointed out was London is being, they have the cities grouped according to size and London has been classified as a small city, unfortunately, and Hamilton has been an example of a city that's just a little bit bigger than London and it's been classified as a medium-sized city. And so they received more than five times the amount of increased funding that London received. So we just have to be aware of that, I believe, and maybe do a better job of letting the province know that we are not a small city and we also have a homelessness crisis here in London that we need the cities or the province's assistance in addressing. Item 4 on the, of 8.2 on the council agenda is short-term accommodations and what committee decided on was to ask for a report back from staff on the idea of grouping short-term accommodations like Airbnb in with the hotels in order to collect that, the tax that we spoke about at SPPC last night, the municipal accommodation tax. So staff are going to report back on that, on whether or not that is something we want to do and they're also going to report back after a year. So right now, there is not a lot of uptake, not a lot of activity in London around short-term accommodations like Airbnb. That could change in a year's time, especially because we'll have the Junos and other great events coming to London. So staff's going to report back and let us know what the status is, what's going on around short-term accommodations in London at that time. Item number 6 is, was a delegation we received from Ms. Alicia McGaw and Alicia McGaw was, is a young woman who was injured in a car accident, I think about 16 years ago, and now is in a wheelchair. So she proposed a unique challenge to city council that we spend a day, each of us or as many of us who are interested, spend a day in a wheelchair so we can experience London the way Londoners who are challenged in that fashion experience London. And the mayor's office, or the mayor, offered the services of the mayor's office to coordinate something like that. So reach out to city councillors to see who's interested and coordinate with Ms. McGaw to let that happen. And finally, the Vehicle For Hire bylaw was a one-year review. We, staff gave us an update on ridership stats. We did learn that the pie is indeed bigger and there are more people using vehicles for hire in the City of London. We also directed staff to conduct consultation with industry stakeholders about certain things like accessible cabs, things like that, and they're going to report back on that and there will be another public participation meeting on vehicles for hire coming soon in the summer. So that is the report with the exception of number 8 and number 11, and I'll put that on the floor now.
Okay, thank you very much. Speakers, I have Deputy Mayor Hubert. Anyone else? Counselor Squire?
I'd like to speak to item number 4, which is the short-term accommodation and not to the MAT issue, but I've had a number of calls on this one, which kind of surprised me a little bit, frankly, and it's not about being, you know, as much as I oppose the Uber thing, I'm not actually down on B&amp;B. I have said in the media that I've used them, I see their place in the marketplace and all of that, but I am concerned about our ability to regulate and be aware of this. And I had a call, I'll give you an example, from someone who rents and apparently the main floor of the place where he and his wife and their young child rent an upper floor is a regular weekend accommodation for people coming in. And they regularly have parties happening there and we really have no mechanism to deal with that outside of our bylaw enforcement, which is what I informed him of. But we also don't have any way of making sure that all of the safety and all of those sorts of things are there that should be in place. So I think this is something that bears us monitoring, Mr. Mayor, and being aware of because I know it's going to be a growth, a point of growth, but I've also heard of houses that are being used, not as long-term rentals, like for eight months or a year, but literally they have an ongoing rotation and the issue is how does that fit into our neighborhood? So I think it's something that bears us watching quite closely and keeping on our radar screen. And I'm not sure, to be honest, how we even go down the road of the MAT if we don't have a registration of them. How do we know who's there other than, you know, through the various websites, so.
Other speakers. Counselor Squire?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I wanted to speak to number 10 and number 13. First of all, with regard to number 10, I think these reports are very important. When you, when you see the Vehicles For Hire, we're having a million, a million more rides in our system. We've grown the pie that much and I think it's imperative in both Counselor Helmer and I spoke to this, we're both on the LTC, that the LTC start working with these groups rather than continuing as we had been before, sort of debating whether we were going to do it. It's here to stay and it's really important that as we move forward and we try to increase ridership in our system and in particular the ridership into industrial areas, that we use these resources that are available to us through Vehicles For Hire to do that. And there is going to be a summit and it's happening soon and if you want to find out about it, the date is escaping me right now, but we're going to talk about exactly that. How do we get access into the industrial areas for LTC using new methods? And one of those new methods may be Vehicles For Hire and I'm very thrilled that that's happening because moving forward, BRT is not the only way to increase ridership. Some would argue, I don't know who they would be, that it doesn't necessarily increase ridership, but if we have to use every single resource available to us to get more people using public transit, and this is a really good resource that we can use and work with them. We've all heard that in other areas, Vehicle For Hire is working with municipalities to provide services into certain areas where the regular bus service just can't do. So I guess what I'm saying is let's view people who are properly licensed and providing a service as allies, not people that we should be worried about, but allies that we can engage in increasing public transit. And I invite you all, you can just check, and I bet Counselor Helmer knows the date, the date of the Vehicle Summit, sorry? May 15th and it starts early in the morning and people are going to, people are trying to queue me here and just check, you'll find out where it is. It's going to be really good, we're going to talk about this, I'm really excited about it.
The summit is Tuesday, May 15th, it begins at 8:30. The location, I'm sure will be revealed to me in another note shortly. Okay, Counselor Turner?
Thanks, your worship. So a couple of them, one with short-term accommodations, the second with the Vehicle For Hire bylaw. With respect to short-term accommodations, I see the, I heard some of the media, I haven't had a chance to watch the tape on the discussion, no recommendation made forward to do any of the licensing or to implement any sort of oversight beyond what currently exists. So I understand utilizing the mechanisms that are already there and in the report, it discusses a plethora of options that could be pursued with respect to regulation, should regulation be one of those choices that council decides to pursue. I guess the one that I'm wondering about, and like Counselor Hubert, I've received a number of calls from neighbors of short-term accommodations and they have a lot of concerns. They have a lot of concerns about people coming in and out at all times, not knowing who's going to be there, and from a SEPTED perspective, it's not great because you don't know who's supposed to be there at any given time from day to day and you don't know if that person is trying to rob the place or if that person is staying there and do they have permission? It's challenging and that volume and number of people. They also talk about challenges with parking, challenges with property standards, challenges with noise. All of those things can be pursued independently through some of the mechanisms that we have right now, but we have one thing that, already on the books, that I wonder if, it was probably discussed at committee, so perhaps through you, your worship, either to the chair or to Mr. Kostifas, what about the landlord rental licensing? Is that something that's viable in this circumstance? This is rental to multiple people over a period of time of a house, so it seems very similar.
So we didn't discuss that specifically, like treating it like a rental unit. We just, the committee decided not to add a whole bunch of layers of regulation to this particular. One of the big reasons was there are really so few in London right now and that's why we asked for the report back, not number of nights, not number of nights of stays, but number of actual people using Airbnb and renting out their places. So that's what we asked for the report back because of the possibility of growth. But I would, I would ask Mr. Kotolik, your worship, to comment on that, on Mr. Turner.
Through your worship, yes, that is correct. We were considering some sort of a licensing scheme on these properties. Committee requested us just to simply report back and consider an alternative sort of tax through the accommodation tax program in terms of capturing some revenues at this point in time, but absolutely no licensing at this juncture. Through your worship, Mr. Kostifas, perhaps you could explain what the challenges of implementing or just using an existing licensing regime that we use for rental accommodations to put to short-term accommodations? If we added short-term accommodations to that same framework that we use right now? I think, it said there was about 500, which is not a small number. It's pervasive throughout, that's probably 40 per ward.
Through, through his worship, yes, that was actually what we were proposing in the report, was to consider amending the rental, residential rental unit licensing bylaw and that's not the direction that committee chose to go.
I would encourage your committee, or the council, to defeat the recommendation committee. I recognize that committee had a good debate and discussion about it. However, I think this is rental accommodation. All the challenges that exist with rental accommodation, all the reasons that we put a bylaw in place for rental accommodation is for public safety, for the occupant's safety. If there's no standards in terms of fire egress and if there's no standards in terms of the number of occupants, all of those things exist in other things, but we put a very specific rental bylaw in place because it, all those other piecemeal pieces didn't holistically capture the regulation of the rental housing market specifically. And I know in Ward 6, for example, it was a huge issue. It was, in fact, the challenges with rental housing in Ward 6 were the impetus for pursuing rental housing bylaw. So I would really encourage council to go back and explore this a little bit further because I think it's really important. I, I'm not going to recommend a referral back because I don't like that kind of tactic. I just prefer that you defeat it and let's go forward with something else instead. If that, if it's defeated, then I would certainly remove the stack of recommendation. With respect to Vehicle For Hire, I, there's probably more discussion as well, oh, sorry. With respect to Vehicle For Hire, there's probably some discussion about removing the cap on taxis. I understand there's a little clause in there that talks about probably requiring some advice from the solicitor with respect to that. I'm not sure if you went into camera to hear that or not. In terms of level playing field, there's a saturated market now on transportation network companies and how does the taxi industry allow itself to compete? If we're not capping the number of TNCs, then why are we not capping, or why aren't we removing the cap from? I'm just going to finish up right here. Why aren't we removing the cap from taxis? I think that's a very straightforward and sensible piece. There's probably some legal implications, but nonetheless, so perhaps the chair or Mr. Kostifas as well could respond to that.
So your worship, that's all part of the consultation that's going to take place and we had a number of delegation requests that actually came to the caps meeting last week and we referred them to, as part of that consultation process. So staff will reach out directly to the members of the industry that wanted delegation status. So there will be this consultation period to talk about all of those things and then staff are going to report back on the results of that consultation period and I don't know if Mr. Kostifas wants to add anything to that or not.
That's helpful, thank you, Counselor Cassidy. The recommendations are a little vague.
Way, way, way over five minutes now. Did you want to make sense?
No.
Okay.
It makes sense, I just wanted to make sure that was captured in the motion. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor, based on your comments, I'm assuming you would like for 2.1 to be dealt with separately? Okay, so we'll deal with 4, 8, and 11 separately. Is that right, Chair? Okay, and I have Counselor Armstrong, I believe.
Just on the issue of Vehicles For Hire, your worship, there's been some comments about the pie, the pie got bigger and so I wanted, a million rides, and so I wanted to, through you, your worship, ask our staff to respond. That's a lot of rides that suddenly just appeared on the radar screen and suddenly being tracked. And so is, does our staff have any explanation as to where a million rides suddenly appeared? Were those rides out there previously or are they new rides or the fact is, don't we know where they came from?
Through your worship, I believe that, we talked about that at the committee meeting and we do not have an actual detailed explanation as to where the additional rides are. They're just, we previously reported through the brokers that the number of trips on an annual basis. We've added the Uber trips in this report and as was stated earlier, the pie is bigger, it's about a million rides more, but we don't know exactly where they are originating from.
So finally, the fact is, is those rides could have already been out there but not being tracked. They could have been, an example, Bandit Cabs, they could have been, who knows, Cash, but because something's triggered, maybe more record-keeping, so really, maybe the pie didn't get bigger, it's just that now it's more documented. That would be my thought because a million rides is a lot of rides, unless suddenly, for an example, our buses are running a million rides less and Counselor Asher will be able to tell us whether there was a million less rides last year or suddenly all, you know, a lot of individuals have decided that they're going to start taking Uber rides or others, you know, but a million? So I probably suspect it could be a So, I probably suspect it could be a combination of factors, but I'm betting a lot of those rides actually did exist earlier, but now it's being tracked, or people are doing it in a more legitimate way.
At committee, we discussed that, and also identified it as an excellent baseline for moving forward. We have that number now recorded to Counselor Helmer and Counselor Hopkins.
On the vehicle for hire bylaw, I think that this is appropriate way to proceed. I think a little bit more consultation on it is appropriate. I think there's a lot going on in the industry, and this is a good way to move forward. On the issue that Counselor Armstrong is talking about, I think it's sometimes easy to forget that Uber actually started operating in 2015. So, they came into the market, they just started offering rides, they were not in compliance with the bylaw, and of course, we weren't counting their rides. And then, when we finally got around to regulating them and bringing them inside the regulatory regime, then we were able to collect licensing fees from them, we were able to get reporting on how many rides were being provided. So, they've almost been operating for three years in the City of London. I'm sure it's been steady growth to get to the point where now there's a million rides happening on that platform. It's probably more now, because I think it's probably still growing. So, I'm not sure why it's a surprise. It's a service that people want, and people are using it.
Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Your Worship. On vehicle for hire, I didn't hear the debate, and I know it's going back to further consultation, but if the committee discussed about the taxis being accessible, that is something, I think, as an aging population, we are going to start relying on vehicles for hire to make them accessible. And sometimes, when a taxi does come, and people aren't able to get their wheelchair, for instance, into the vehicle, and I know we do have a cap limit. I hear what Counselor Turner said about wondering how effective this cap is. So, I just want to make those comments. I'm hoping that the further consultation will be looking at the accessibility of vehicles and maybe increasing that cap and keeping it open. For the short-term accommodations, I'm not exactly sure.
Counselor, can I just stop you there? We'll deal with short-term accommodations separately, so I'll go to you when we come to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Morgan.
Yes, I just wanted to add a piece of information, given the comments that were made, and that our staff are probably listening to the things that we want in the report back on the review of vehicles for hire. In other jurisdictions, vehicle for hire companies simply hand money over to the municipality so that they can take care of subsidizing accessible ride platforms. And Uber, for example, is one that does in other jurisdictions, and at some point, we basically just ask them for a bunch of money, and they may hand it over because that would be replicating an arrangement they have in other jurisdictions. There are lots of considerations with that, and whether we can actually, you know, then go out and contract a private company. But I think these are the types of things that can be part of the discussion, and the accessible rides component, and making sure that that is available is a really important thing for us to address moving forward.
Other speakers. Okay, so this is the report with the exception of four, eight, and 11. Oh, to 13. Pardon me, Counsel Squire, I did have you down for 13. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just want to give a bit of a shout-out to the medical students at the Shulock School of Medicine. You probably, some of you have probably met with them. Last year and this year, they invite me to their school to do an advocacy session with them about how to advocate to municipal counselors. My advice to them was, if you can convince the counselor from Ward 6 to spend money, you should be able to convince any other counselors to spend money. Beyond that, they come with projects each year. Last year, they had one, another one this year. It's a really great opportunity for them to give back to the community. They don't have to do it, and I really appreciate that they're taking the time to do that, run advocacy workshops, come and meet with counselors, and it's really a great experience for them. And they're great young people who are representing Western University in Ward 6, and I'm really, really pleased about that.
Thank you. Okay, I have no additional speakers, so I'll call the question. We're voting.
Yeah, I'm just making sure what I'm voting for.
Closing the vote in the motion carries, 14 to 0.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll put item four on the floor.
Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you. So, this is the short-term accommodations, and I was just listening to Counselor Turner, and I have a few concerns with this myself and what we're doing here. I know the, we're going to be looking at the transit tax, and we're also going to be looking at an update on the status of rentals. And I hear from staff that there aren't a lot of short-term rentals, and I've used a number of short-term rentals, and I do find that people have their units up for very short periods of time even, even a couple months. And I'm not exactly sure if we have all the information that we really need right now. And I think we do need to explore it a little bit more, and would like to probably take that avenue more than just supporting something that we are going to be looking at just from a tax increase. And I'll not be supporting the committee motion.
Counselor Morgan.
Yes, I'll join a couple of my colleagues in not having any interest in investigating a transient tax. I don't think now's the time to do so. That being said, I actually don't mind passing the other components of the motion, so, you know, if there's A and C, C is reporting back with an update on the status of short-term rentals in approximately a year, I don't see any objection to that. So, I'm not sure if colleagues who are against the motion actually want B separated out and the rest to pass. I would like to see it that way, because I'm actually okay with A and C.
Counselor Helmer.
I would like to encourage my colleagues to support all parts of the motion. The first part is really just to receive the report, which I think is not controversial. The second part, which Counsel Morgan's asked to be pulled out separately, is about the accommodation tax we just dealt with for motels and hotels. I think from a fairness perspective, it's appropriate to tax other forms of accommodation like we would tax motels and hotels. We're not doing that right now, we're just asking for a report back on it. I can tell you, from talking to the policy people at Airbnb directly, this is something that they encourage. They would like to be taxed because they recognize as a company, they need to be contributing just like everybody else, and that they should be taxed like other providers of accommodation. So, that's something that they want. I don't know about the other platforms, and I think when the report comes back, what we might be looking at is something like, you know what, we can tax Airbnb very easily. The other ones are not really set up to do it, let's start there. You know, that might be a way of doing it. And this is really just to get a report back in the future, we're not moving forward. The principles we passed about the motel and hotel accommodation tax earlier, that is not for short-term rentals, right? So, it's explicitly exempting them for now. The second part is to report back again in a year about how things are going, and I think that some of the discussions around regulation, we can have them in a year. From my perspective, there's not a problem in London. There's all kinds of rules that do apply to short-term rentals, for example, the building code, and all the other things are involved in accommodation generally. And so, I think that there may be a case to have rental licensing for really short-term rentals, especially when people are providing it on a long-term basis. So, if they're renting out 180 days a year, you know, maybe it makes sense to be licensed. If they're doing it six or seven times a year when people are away, probably not. That seems like a bit of a regulatory burden that is unnecessary. So, I think we should take our time with it. That's what this motion is doing, is saying, let's talk about it again in a year. There's really a small amount happening in London right now. I can tell you, as a user of Airbnb, I'm going to go to the FCM conference in Halifax. It's going to cost me about $45 a night to stay there. Airbnb has a lot of advantages in terms of the traveling public. It keeps costs down very low. A hotel is something like $300 a night, and it's 45, so saving the taxpayers of the City of London a little bit of money. And I think that that's going to be really helpful, you know, the long-term in terms of encouraging tourism and people coming to the city, and helps people make money off of their properties. So, I think, you know, there's a lot of advantages. There may be a case to do some regulation in the future. If we have some issues, we're keeping an eye on it, and I think that's the appropriate way forward, which is what is there in Part C.
Okay. Colleagues, I have Counselor Turner, and since we pulled this separately, I'll allow it, and Counselor Squire.
Thanks, and I'll be really brief. Just procedurally, if I were to ask, to try and figure out how to get the recommendation of B, the staff administration be recommended to hold public participation meetings, and Counselor Helmer is quite right, I mean, there's nothing really in the motion here that excludes that, but it would have to be either an amendment, or it would have to be something as a separate item. So, procedurally, if I wanted that back on there, it's not contrary to the motion that's here. It's supplemental, so is that moving an amendment to it, or?
Wow, are we doing, I say this respectfully to everyone, but there was an extensive amount of talk about this at committee, and the idea was to take a look at this, to have staff report back, and then move forward with a PPM if we felt it was necessary at the time. I don't see it as in any way counter to the direction of the committee, and so if you wanted to suggest an amendment, if there's a seconder, then we could do that, but I can tell you, it was the intention of the committee to explore that option once we had further information. So, if you want to bring that forward, if there's a seconder, then we will consider that an amendment to Part B.
Thank you. Not to do committee work on the floor, but, yeah, I'd like to move B, please.
Okay, is there a seconder for that? Seconder? This is on the amendment, so this is to introduce a public participation meeting process to B. Okay, so it's been seconded. Okay, let's deal with the amendment. The amendment only is going to get a little bit, actually, let's deal with just B and just the amendment on B, and look for any speakers on that. Okay, Counselor Squire, on the amendment on B?
Oh, B proper, or just the amendment?
Just the amendment, yeah. Okay, thank you. I've got you on the speakers list for B. Okay, on the amendment only. Deputy Mayor Hubert?
Just briefly, Ms. Mayor, I actually thought the amendment would have been on C to my colleague, because it's about the whole of short-term rentals, and then whether you apply the mat to them or not is sort of a secondary issue, and to me, that seems like a better order of operation.
If I may clarify, the staff recommendation in the report at the committee is B, that staff be directed, so, yeah, and C is here in the committee recommendation.
Okay, so, thank you, Deputy Mayor Hubert. So, let's just deal with the amendment on C for a public participation meeting. Any other speakers? Okay, I'm going to open the vote. This is on the amendment on C. We'll give Ms. Westlake Power a little bit of time. Don't open the vote yet, Ms. Westlake Power. I've got a speaker. Counselor Helmer.
I was going to say that it may be unwise of Counselor Turner to bring this forward. If it fails, you're going to be in a situation where no time between now and, say, December 1st, are we going to be able to have a public participation meeting, which might not be a great idea.
Any other speakers? Counselor Van Holst, on the amendment only.
Okay, well, what I want to say about this is that to a man with a hammer, everything seems like a nail, and to people who do regulation, everything seems like it's something that needs to be regulated, but I think for the work that it takes for staff, we don't need to, we don't need to do that, and I prefer that we just wait for the year and see how things go. We've got other ways to deal with these situations. Let's see if those things work. You know, we can always wait and see if it works. We don't need to be jumping ahead all the time. I appreciate the lengthy debate made at the committee, and I would prefer to just go forward with the recommendation as it stands.
Okay, on the amendment on C, any other speakers? Okay, there are no additional speakers. I am going to open the vote. Let's call the question. And we're voting.
Closing the vote in the motion is lost, 6 to 8.
Okay, why don't we step this out? I'll go to Counselor Squire now on the main motion, and what I will do is call A, B, and C separately when we get to the vote, just because of the changes that have been suggested. Counselor Squire?
Just with regard to the issue of the tax, of course, I voted on every occasion not to do the accommodation tax, so it's entirely consistent for me to now say, I'm not going to do it on Airbnb. So, any argument that's been made that, well, we have to do this because it's consistent, I'm also going to be consistent and not look at the tax here. The other issue I want to raise about Airbnbs also being a user is that there's an internal rating system for Airbnbs for both the person who's using the premises and the person renting. And what they, what you do is, you report on whether the person was a good guest, or whether the person was a good host. And quickly, those are in the system, and I can tell you, when we were going to Florida, we would always check those ratings, find out if the person hosting us was a very good host, and whether the place was clean, well-maintained, and then, of course, we would look at the ratings of us and see what people thought of us, and whether they thought we were good guests. So, there's a real internal free-market device to make sure that these things are being operated very well. And I can tell you that I have not had a single inquiry on this particular issue.
Thank you. Counselor Van Holst. Any additional speakers? Counselor Hopkins?
Yeah, I'll just get out to say, I'd like to be consistent, too. I'm not supporting the 4% on hotel accommodation, and likewise, I won't be supporting it on short-term rentals. I do think that, like Counsel Squire said, there is that system out there about being asked to give your feedback when you rent a property, and that in itself is very well regulated, and it's free enterprise at its best, I think.
Okay. Counselor Saleh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, I appreciate some of the comments here today. I think it's an appropriate thing. I said this during the hotel tax conversation, where we recognize that, you know, there's more of a demand on our infrastructure, sewage, and all those pieces, and the money's got to come from somewhere, so I think it's quite appropriate to do that. And I know there was some comments, and, you know, and I don't hold it against my colleagues because maybe they were not aware, but sometimes, you know, there is those feedback mechanisms that are in those apps, but I know just last year, there was, you know, Airbnb and other companies had many issues to deal with around racism and things, those pieces, where it resulted in Airbnb having to partner up with the NAACP just because of the kind of systemic issues and challenges they had. So, I just don't want us to just kind of gloss over that and not recognize that there still could be challenges, and that's why sometimes regulations is needed.
Thank you. Okay, let's deal with Part A. Chair, want to wrap up? Okay.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to encourage everybody to support the committee recommendation, recognizing certain counselors are being consistent with how they feel about the transient tax. But, long and short, as Counsel Helmer said, it's a report back. We're not making decisions on how we're going, whether we're going to regulate this or not tonight. It's a report back. And as Counselor Saleh pointed out, the demands on our infrastructure when visitors come to the city, and especially on an Airbnb, because if there are issues with enforcement of our existing bylaws, like nuisance bylaws, noise bylaw, property standards, those sorts of things, that's a cost to the city, and so, having this transient tax not only is an issue of fairness, if we're going to have it on the hotel industry, we should have it on this other form of short-term accommodation. But as Mr. Kotolik pointed out at committee, a number of our regulations and bylaws, such as the building code, the nuisance bylaw, the noise bylaw, property standards, those things all apply, and those are ways to regulate and control these kinds of short-term accommodations. The final thing is, many of these property owners live in the home and rent parts of the home out, so that is another added level of, to ensure that these things are run properly. So, I encourage everybody to support the committee recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Cassidy. I'm about ready to call Part A, then B, then C. Counselor Van Holst, I think you spoke on the amendment, so you're speaking to the main motion?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out to my colleagues who want to be consistent, I think that's fine. However, since council did support the tax, then I think there's an opportunity to, that creates a new context, and you might ask yourself, well, if we're going to have a tax, then should we, should we be including this as well? So, I think it's a different, I think it's a different kind of decision, so I just leave that with you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, let's call the question on Part A.
Counselor Van Holst? Closing the vote and the motion carries, fourteen to zero.
I'll move Part B.
Okay. I don't see any speakers for Part B, so I will call the question. Let's open the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, Counselor Squire?
Ah, nay.
Counselor Squire voted nay.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, eleven to three.
Okay, Your Worship, I'll put C on.
I have no speakers for C. I'll call the question. If we can open the vote, please. And we're voting.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I'll put Item 8 on the floor, and it dealt with the adult live entertainment parlor, and a request to change the location of an existing license, and committee voted to make no amendment, and so it's on the floor.
Speakers? Counselor Armstrong?
I'll be brief. The reality is, the vote was five to one, but the, I guess the thing is, the adult entertainment license is currently in East London on Dundas Street, and they want to, they've requested the applicant to move it to Exeter Road. Now, the current location is beside a library and a daycare, across the street from residential. And I guess, or excuse me, not across the street, residential abuts it to the rear. The new location that they're proposing, that they'd like to move their establishment to, is a single building that currently has a similar license on the property. It is in a totally commercial area, but abutting to the back area is industrial, light industrial. So no residential around. You have to go quite a distance over to Exeter Road to run into residential. All the issue, or all the distances, nothing fell within the distances for the Exeter Road property. So this is exactly the type of location that we want these establishments to be in, but our committee, because there's some hotels in the area, and for other reasons, which I'm, you know, I'm not going to get into, decided not to support this. So I think this is, this would, is a far superior location. The old location is in the, the establishment is in the basement of a very old building. It's, it has a lot of issues, and because, of course, this, not even wheelchair accessible. So the thing is, it exists because it was grandfathered. That location today, if you wanted to have a establishment there, we would deny it immediately on numerous grounds. So this is a better location, a newer building, so it has to meet today's standards in every way. So, and I'm particularly concerned about the issue of fire being in the basement, operating establishment like this, but the committee, in its wisdom, felt that this is not a better location, that they should continue their search throughout the city to find the perfect location. Well, I think this is the right location, and I don't understand why people would not want them to move there. So in any event, what I wanted to ask through you to our staff as a question, two minutes, could you please tell me, and I'm assuming that this request will be denied today, what is the process after this, from a legal perspective? Where would the applicant have to go? Is there an appeal internally, within the city, or what do they do?
So what remedies are available to the applicant? Who would like to answer that question? Mr. Card, or Mr. Kostofus?
Mr. Presiding Officer, there are no appeals, so that answers the other question. What is the status of the matter now? Can the individual go elsewhere? And the answer is, there are other possible areas of recourse. I would want to discuss those in camera. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Card. Counselor?
No need to, I won't ask that we go in camera, but I understand the legal process from here, but there are no appeals, so I don't know if they'll come back with another site, and what will happen then, but this site makes sense, and if they remain in the current site, there's a lot of drawbacks in many, many ways. So in any event, it's unfortunate that no one could see, you know, that this is a superior site, so I'll leave it at that. I won't be supporting committee's recommendation, but I appreciate that they did listen to the applicant.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Usher?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Counselor Armstrong is right, but he said that the committee, in its wisdom, rejected the site, and the key word there is the wisdom. I think it's a wise decision to reject the site. And I'll tell you, I know that the site may meet certain criteria, distances from churches, distances from residents, and so on, but, you know, we have to make a decision also, and this location on Exeter Road is what I refer to as the gateway into London. You're coming along the 401, and you decide to take Wellington to get into London, you've got to pass the site, and there are many people on weekends, weekdays, who come into London, and when they come into London to visit, this is the place that they're going to pass, and that's the first thing that they're going to see. When they're coming back home on a Sunday afternoon from cottages or vacation with all the children, this is the first thing that they're going to see. When they come here, and they are bringing all the young ones who are coming into the city to play sports, and they accommodate them at those hotels in that area, this is the first thing that they're going to see. And there are many hotels. This is a location in this area where many are filled with youths throughout the, many, many weekends, because they come here to play competitive sports, mostly at the Western Fair. They come from Toronto and everywhere else between here and Kingston. They come here and they compete with their competitors who are here. So there are lots of youths there on weekends in those hotels. One of those hotels accommodated church on Sunday mornings. Yes, I understand that it's a little bit more than 100 meters. In fact, somebody told me it's 300 meters, but nevertheless, those people have to drive past there, and some of them walk to that church. The residents are not way over yonder. The residents are just down the street. Yes, more than 100 meters, because they have to cross Wellington, but all the people in Ward 12, who live just down the street, east of, west of that intersection of Wellington and Exeter, they live in that area, they got to pass in through there. And I just don't think that it is the right place for a business of this nature. I know that some people say, forget about everything, let's just consider it a business, and it's the right location. Well, not for the people who live in the area, not for the people who have to be accommodated there, not for the hotel association. I just think that the committee made a wise decision, and they used wisdom in rejecting this request at this point in time. Thank you.
Counselor? Counselor Zafman?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and through you, I'll be pretty brief. We had, there was quite a lengthy discussion at committee. I think one of the points which really seemed to hit home with a lot of members of the committee was the fact that, while yes, this is next to hotels, these hotels are sort of unique in the sense that they have many long-term stays here, which sort of led to the discussion around, you know, is this sort of, is this a residential? Is this, how do we look at that? And I very much appreciate where the committee went with this, and I agree, this is not, where the site currently is, I think we all recognize that that is not an ideal site. It's been grandfathered in, and if it was today, that site would not be located there. However, I still tend to think that the site, while it may be better as a result of it, you know, not being next to a library, or schools, or children's daycares, it's still not a good site. And I hope that the proponents will come back and provide us with a new site at some point in the near future. I know I asked staff at the meeting, and I know it's a difficult undertaking, but trying to find mapping of where this could potentially be located, but I do believe that there are a number of other sites throughout the city that could be found. And one other piece, which I just, just for comment's sake, but, you know, the fact that these types of establishments fall under the zoning for taverns is kind of interesting, and maybe at some point in the future, we look at something unique to actually suit a bit better for these types of facilities. Thanks.
Other speakers? Counselor Helmer?
Well, I'm not going to support the recommendation coming from the committee. I think that the current location is not ideal. The business itself wants to move out, which I think gives you an indication of how good the location is. I think Counselor Armstrong is making a good point, which is, if you apply the locational criteria in the licensing bylaw now to the location, I mean, it doesn't meet basically any of them. It's very close to residential, it's very close to a daycare. I don't know why we would like it to stay there, frankly. I do think it's possible that they'll continue to look for other locations, and unfortunately, a lot of the discussion really focused on the reasons why this is not a good location. And I could see us being in a continuous process of looking at locations and say, wow, I don't like this location, and I don't like that location, and we could talk about it three, four, five times, it's in different wards, it's in different parts of the city, nobody wants it, not in my backyard, kind of approach, right? I understand why the hotels in the area, especially the ones that are right around it, don't want it. They think it's bad for their business. I get that. That's their private interest, right? We're talking about what is in the public interest, right? What is the appropriate place for this kind of business to go, given the criteria we have in the licensing? Right? So you apply the criteria to the licensing, I think it's pretty obvious that it meets the criteria. So how good is it? I don't think it's the greatest site in the world. I said there's no sidewalk on the north side, it's actually kind of hard to get to unless you're driving, it's not very well-served by transit. Those are not criteria in the licensing bylaw. Maybe they should be, but they're not. And, you know, I think it's not the best possible location. It's better than the one it's in now, and if the business owner wants to move there and it meets the location, I don't see what is the big obstacle. There is an adult body rub parlor in the exact same building that's been there since 1999. All the hotels seem to be doing okay. I was just down there on Sunday at the Four Points Sheridan for the long-term, the LTC, Safe Driving and Long-Term Service Recognition. It was about 500 meters away from this location. I can tell you, I couldn't even see it. I don't even know that it's there, right? I'm not that far away, and like, it's not even visible. I spend most of my time inside the hotel, which is what most people do when they're in hotels. They go inside the hotel, then they leave, and they go somewhere, like the place they're going to in the city. I don't know that they walk around too much when there's no sidewalks, and just say, I wonder what's over here. So I think it's actually kind of out of the way, and I don't think it's really a big obstacle. When you think about what the view looks like, actually, coming in on Wellington Road, it's not really in your view either. I mean, I guess if they put a huge sign, then maybe it would be a bit more visible, but what's there right now, you'd be seeing the gas station and things like that that are closer to Wellington. Coming in off Exeter, I think it's closer, but the building itself is set back a fair ways from the road. So, you know, is it a perfect location? No. Is it better than the location it's in now? I think so. And I think we have to keep in mind that, you know, this is a business where people work, right? And we think, what's actually good for them? It's not just about all the people who don't go to the business and don't work there, right? What is actually a good location for the people who do work there? So this one, I think, you know, it's not a million times better than the current location. I think it's slightly better, and I don't see any reason to refuse it. So I'm going to vote against this recommendation, and if it fails, then I would support the granting of the license for that location.
Any other speakers? Want to wrap up? Okay, go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, Your Worship. First of all, I want to address a few points when I, while I wrap up. What we heard from Mr. Kostofus at committee regarding the building code was, if the applicant chooses to do renovations on the new site, then where the renovations take place, those would have to be up to the current building code. So only if he does renovations on the front entrance, would the front entrance have to meet accessibility standards, for example. So it's only if renovations take place that we have to bring the premises up. We heard from a lot of people at the PPM. I hear what Counselor Helmer is saying, the current location is not perfect. It's actually much, much less than perfect, but the new location is marginally better, and for a number of reasons. We heard from the people that spoke at the PPM that the motels and hotels in the area are places where a lot of people come for sporting events, for tournaments, hockey tournaments, baseball tournaments, things like that. So we have a lot of families staying in these hotels and motels, and they say that they also have a lot of long-term customers that come for work contracts, where they're in London for quite a, quite a long period of time, and they may come with their families, and so these are beyond short-term accommodations. As Counselor Zafman said, it wasn't a refusal to the applicant that he can't move, that he must stay at his current site. It was, it was just saying that the committee did not agree and endorse the new site that he's proposing, and he was encouraged to continue looking for more appropriate sites. We have criteria, we have citing criteria that he can use to find a more appropriate site. So Counselor Helmer also brought up about the workers. This is a legitimate business, and there were some comments that maybe, may have made people that were, women that work in this industry feel more marginalized, and I certainly don't want to add to that. They're working at a licensed business, and this is the work that they do. But as workers as well, this is not a necessarily high-paying job. They're not making hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, so getting to work, these workers getting to work, this is not an easy place to get to work on transit. It would be expensive if this person lived at a different end of the city and had to take a cab every night to get to this place of employment. So the Dundas Street location is actually more accessible by transit, so it's actually better for the workers to get to their place of employment. And there also was the issue that was touched upon briefly at the PPM, and we heard correspondence, we had correspondence leading up to the PPM, about human trafficking, and these hotels and motels along the way are on that 401 corridor where we know human trafficking is taking place. So there is that fear of having this sort of connection. And I know when I did a police ride along a little over a year ago, we went to all these hotels, and we sat in the parking lot and checked out the license plates and looked for evidence of human trafficking taking place. So that's all. And I, so for all of those reasons, I encourage everybody to support the staff recommendation. We had a very fulsome PPM and a lot of debate and discussion at committee.
Okay, I have no additional speakers. Point of order? Go ahead, Counselor.
I think the Chair referred to staff recommendation, but it's committee recommendation, am I right? Yeah, just wanted to be sure.
Thank you for correcting the record, okay. There is no round two. You're at council. You've had your opportunity to speak. Okay, thank you. So with that, there are no additional speakers, so I'm going to call the question. Just before we close the vote, one second. Counselor Helmer?
Closing the vote and the motion carries, ten to three with one recused.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 10 to 3 with one recuse.
Okay, Your Worship, they'll put the final item on, which is the update from Dr. Chris Mackey on the, the status of the opioid crisis working group. So this was the opioid crisis working group that the mayor and Dr. Mackey recommended councils to endorse. And one of the items that was left on the deferred matters list on, on this committee on caps was that we get an update. So Dr. Mackey provided us with that update by letter, which you all would have had a chance to read in the package.
I know there was conflict called on this item. Any speakers? Okay, I'll open the vote. Let's call the question. We're voting.
Closing the vote. And the motion carries 13 to 1.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, let's move to the 10th report of the Corporate Services Committee. Counselor Helmer.
Thank you. I will put the entire report from committee on the floor. I haven't heard of anyone wanting to pull anything.
Counselor Turner?
Again, in my rush to get in here, there's a few on here as well. So conflicts on 2.2, which is five. Sorry, the employee absenteeism does refer to 101 employees as I supervise them. So in number seven, which is 4.2, confirmation of employment advisory, so this is a non-voting member from the Middlesex London Health Unit. So I've got a conflict there. And also on 2.4, which is number four, the sources of financing, there are two properties which I've declared conflicts on in the past that are financed specifically, number one and number three, 26 and 28 Wellington.
Okay, thank you. So what we'll do, if there is no objection and no interest in, in anyone else calling things separately, is we'll deal with one, two, three, six, and eight, and then we'll deal with your conflict separately. Any speakers on one, two, three, six, or eight? Mr. Park.
Thank you. I just wanted to rise on 2.1 in the committee report, the city facilities for activities organizations which promote hate. I'm very grateful for the recommendation that came from staff. My concern is the implementation of said policy. We've seen organizations meeting on the very front steps of City Hall. Some very hateful things have been said, and no action's been taken to remedy that in the, the view of the public that have attended and counter protest and counter rallies and that sort of thing. So I think it behooves us to move forward in a more productive means when we're implementing said policy, to make sure that organizations that are gathering on the steps of City Hall are not spewing hatred, because it's just not appropriate.
Any other speakers? Mr. Squire.
Mr. Chair, I wasn't going to rise on this matter, but I am now. You know, free speech is really important, and it's important to me, and the Charter of Rights is really important to me. And along with free speech comes, it's not a fashionable thing. It's not a thing that is politically correct, or politically incorrect or correct. In fact, often, free speech is very politically incorrect. And sometimes free speech is offensive to some of us. And sometimes people say things that we don't like, and that we interpret in a, in a very negative way ourselves. There are various clear provisions in the criminal code as to what is hate speech. That's for the police to deal with. There have been groups who have protested at City Hall, some of them I've even met with, who people say they're hate groups. I've had a chance to meet with them, and I've had a chance to disagree with them personally, one-on-one, and say, I don't disagree with what you're, I don't agree at all with what you're saying, but I'm going to fight like crazy to make sure you can say it. And whether that's on the steps of City Hall, or in Victoria Park, or anywhere, free speech has to be maintained. And sometimes, none of us are going to like it. So when we start saying that we don't want hate speech, sometimes what is hate speech or isn't hate speech can be in, in our own interpretation of that. So we have to be very careful. We also have to be very careful, in my view, in labeling people we don't agree with in a certain way. In saying, well, I don't agree with them, so they're hate mongers. I don't agree with them, so they're this, or they're that. Okay?
Point of order?
Thank you. I don't want my comments to be misconstrued in any of the, the words that Counselor Squire's saying. I've heard personally from people who were at these events, and they complained to the police, and unfortunately, nothing was done. So I'm just standing up for those folks, and I by no means want to shut anybody down from free speech or freedom of expression here in Canada. And I think that it's appropriate for policies to be in place here at the city.
Mr. Squire.
And I don't have any problem with that at all. All I'm cautioning against is that a municipal government that doesn't have jurisdiction in this area dive into it or express their views on it. And I will, I've always been of the view that there are a lot of people out there that I will disagree with. I might not even like what they say, but they have the right to say it. And I'm, I'm certainly going to protect that, and I'm not going to make judgment. So I just want us to be careful in the future in how we deal with this issue.
Other speakers? I'm going to open the vote in a moment. Deputy Mayor Hubert?
I want to rise on the poutine festival. It has absolutely nothing to do with a very important thing, but I think it's important to recognize that back in 1810 in France, that word came into being, and has a very long and, and interesting history. I look forward to, I'm not really into poutine. Actually, one French translation of it is simply, "It's a mess." And that's often what ends up when you eat poutine. But I think it'll be a very interesting festival. And I'm going to say, Counselor Usher this, because he's still waiting for the guidelines. So these things do not need to come to our agenda. And I'm sure the clerk is working on that.
Any other speakers? I think the only question on our mind is how did it take this long for there to be the first annual poutine festival in London, Ontario? There are no additional speakers. Let's call the question. We are voting.
Closing the vote and the motion, Counselor Squire? Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 0.
I will put 2.4 on the floor.
Chair, if you could, 2.4, 2.2, and 4.2. I think there was a single member with a conflict.
Sure, same issue. Yeah, that's fine.
Go ahead, Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Your Worship, just for clarity, the, the conflict is with respect to bullet I and bullet III. Just those two properties, the remainders I'm okay with. Whatever's easiest.
Okay, thanks. So we'll deal with all three of those conflicts. And thanks for the clarification. That'll be noted in the record. Any speakers? Okay, I'm going to open the vote. Let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 13 with one recuse.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, let's move to added reports. This is the seventh report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. Counselor Usher, did you want to move that report? It's being distributed now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's the same one. Thank you. Well, considering that we just finished this report just a few hours ago, I don't think we have any one who would like to pull. But we do have some conflict of interest, and some people may want to pull those, such as Counselor Turner, Counselor Morgan, Counselor Zafman, and Counselor Park. So I'm going to wait to hear what they want to pull. Otherwise, I'll put them all on the floor.
Just looking for any declarations of conflict. This is the SPPC from yesterday. Counselor Park?
So I've declared, and I think it would be appropriate to vote the same way as we did yesterday.
It's just declarations for now?
Yeah, just declarations. Okay, so I think those are all on record. And so what we'll do is we'll break out the motion the same way that we dealt with that last evening. So let's deal with that section separately. And I'll go to Counselor Hopkins and Squire. Let's deal with the bulk of the report, and we'll deal with that portion afterwards. This is on rapid transit. So we're not dealing with rapid transit right now, the remainder of the report. Counselor Squire?
The matter dealing with the tax, transient accommodation tax, I'd like that pulled.
Okay, so Counselor Usher, how about we deal with the entire report with the exception of 3.2 and 3.3?
Yes, Counselor Zafman, if he's got a conflict with 3.1 with the GMS, GMI's.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the council bringing that up. I just made a point that while I, in the past, may have declared something on this matter, there's nothing actually substantively in this that I need to declare a conflict on.
So that's fine, Mr. Chair. So give me those that we are not doing again.
Yes, we're going to do the entire report with the exception of 3.2 and 3.3.
Okay. And for those who are looking at the, on the screen, it's item number four, and probably item number five, is it? The accommodation tax and rapid transit. We're holding back on those, right?
So 3.2 is the bus rapid transit issue, and 3.3 is the municipal accommodation tax implementation.
Yeah, okay.
Any speakers on the balance of the report? Okay, there are none. So I will open the vote, call the question. Voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 0.
Okay, Counselor Usher, we're going to deal with 3.2 now, but we're going to break it out the same way that we did yesterday. And Ms. Westlake Power is going to use the voting record from yesterday to break this out in the appropriate sections.
That mean that we are going to do I first there? I and double I? AI and double I? Just the I.
So the first motion will be to approve parts A, I, B, C, D, G, and H. Any speakers? There are none. We'll just wait for that vote to come up on screen. Counselor Van Holst?
Thank you. I'm up for against this for the reasons I mentioned yesterday, but I also would later on be interested in adding a part F. So I'll leave it to you to decide when that would be appropriate. Thanks.
Okay, it's up on screen now. If you scroll down to the bottom. Any speakers? There are none. I'll call the question. Let's open the vote. And we're voting. Okay, it's up on screen now. If you scroll down to the bottom. Any speakers? There are none. I'll call the question. Let's open the vote. And we're voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 11 to 2 with one recuse.
Counselor Usher, I think now we'll deal with approving part A3. Yeah, this is the South Lake. That's up on screen now. It's titled three. Again, this is the South Lake. Any speakers? Let's call the question. Voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 10 to 2 with two recues.
Do we do A2 now?
Yeah, so we'll do A2, E, and F, and the introductory and closing paragraphs. Okay, it's up now. It's titled four. You'll see the introductory and closing paragraphs, A2, E, and F, at the bottom of your screen. Any speakers? I'll call the question. And we're voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 12 to 2.
Now, Counselor Usher, it's A4 and A5.
Just for those who are following, if they lost this, I'll page seven of the report.
Okay, it's up on screen now at the bottom, titled five. This is parts A4 and five. Any speakers? Let's call the question. And we're voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 11 to 3. Closing the vote and the motion carries 11 to 3.
So I believe that we've finished with the...
One more.
Okay.
There's the one more section.
Oh, yeah, the A.
The lead into part A.
Yeah, sorry.
And it's up at the bottom of the screen, titled 6. Any speakers? Okay, let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 11 to 2 with one recuse.
So that's finished with the rapid transit. Well, I just want to say, Mr. Chair, that I'm going to breathe a sigh of relief after 12 years of the first time I heard about rapid transit was 2006 when I was on the commission. We've worked through this. We've had our bumps, but I think that we've done a pretty good job. But it's not, we heard the speeches yesterday and it's not the end. There may be some tweaking to do and let's hope that it goes smoothly from here. And I, on my, from my perspective, I want to thank the council here who have worked diligently on this to bring it to this phase. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Usher, for being there right from the very beginning. Councilor Van Holst?
Thank you, Your Worship. We're going into the T-PAP process now and I'd like us to really look at some alternatives. I think we need to rethink our plan a bit and I think we need to rethink it because it's not an excellent plan. And I think we should want to have an excellent plan. Up to this point, what we've wanted was BRT. We wanted not to be the biggest city without it. We wanted the shiny object and we have that. Congratulations. This council really, really wanted to have that. What my concern is, and it's based on something that...
Point of order. Go ahead, Councilor Turner.
Just from a point of privilege, councilors is characterizing statements and positions of the rest of council, which I don't think is appropriate.
Thank you. So, Councilor, I'd ask that you limit your comments to your views and not to those of council.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd also ask that if you have a motion to bring forward, you could bring that forward sooner rather than later. This would be a part I and we'd look for a second before we continue with discussion.
Thank you very much. So I do have a motion and I believe I have a secondor. And it's to ask that during the T-PAP process, staff work with council and stakeholders to generate alternatives to the draft plan for later consideration.
Just before we proceed, is there a secondor for that? Councilor Squire? Okay, go ahead. Proceed, councilor.
Okay, thank you very much. So Mr. Soldo said very early on that there was going to be sacrifices in this plan and he was right. And my concern is that the, in the process, the staffing consultants looked at their priorities and they didn't ask us what we were willing to sacrifice. And I'll use Councilor Helmer's example of Warren Cliff Road from yesterday. So in that instance, we were sacrificing the quality of the rapid transit and our, the experts that we brought in said that that may not be a great idea. So it's some things like that that I would like to look at again. We made a number of decisions that were really close, very difficult decisions about whether to expand, whether to not expand a road, and I think it's worth looking at those again because they may not be popular. So I'd like to look at those in more depth and the reasoning for which we made them. And I don't, there were justifications for things and I'm not 100% satisfied with all those things. So what I wanted to do is make sure that there's...
Councilor Turner, point of order. Sorry, Councilor Turner is rising to point of order.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is a decided matter of council. I think this motion is contrary to be entertained at this point. We've moved forward and I think, yeah, I'd like to hear that ruled out of order.
I'm just trying to determine when we approve the routes. Was it July 2017?
A moment ago. Two minutes ago.
Sorry, that's a decided matter of council, but then also when we go back, yeah. So really, I think this is contrary. What you're looking to do, I think, is creative and constructive, but contrary to the decision that council has already made. And so the, I'm going to rule that as out of order at this time.
All right, okay, thank you. I was just trying to inform the T-PAP process to make it, put a little more depth to it, but I'll accept the chair's ruling. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, Councilor Park?
I think it's, as a point of order, if we could hear very briefly what the T-PAP process entails, because I think that a lot of the objectives there is to talk about what the roadways are going to look like, what the stops are going to look like, and get more feedback in. We've heard time and time again, this is not the end of the process.
So Ms. Scher, if you could go over what the course of the next six months will look like.
Thank you, Your Worship. Certainly, the T-PAP process is a refinement of the approvals from council that have already been made. It is not an opportunity to reexamine new routes, new technology, but it is, as the councilor has stated, an opportunity to go to the next detailed phase of assessment to have that discussion about the stop location, stop design, property impacts, and the way that that runs. A lot of the information that's in the T-PAP has actually already been created and shared and it is part of the motion that's been approved now at council tonight. The next start of the process is a legislative process related to public consultation, ministerial review, and ultimately ministerial consent. There's, after that, a detailed design process that would be going even further into the detail in these routes. This has been a progressive narrowing of our focus to provide more and more specific information versus not the time where you'd introduce maybe new opportunities, new ideas, new concepts, new routes, new technologies.
Thank you, Councilor Park. Okay, so with that, I think we are through 3.2 and moving on to 3.3.
Which is item number 5 on the screen. As a municipal accommodation tax implementation.
Any speakers? We'll wait for that motion to come forward. Councilor Turner?
Thanks. It looks like there is a number, there's a recusal and a number of nay votes in this, so probably each clause separated out might work. Sorry, there's a recusal and a number of nays through the different clauses, so perhaps it's just easiest to go clause by clause through this.
Okay, what you can see, then it's listed as 2 at the bottom of the screen if you scroll down. It's really all but D. Go ahead.
I would prefer to go A, B, C, and D, but Councilor Turner would like to go each of them. A first, then B, then C, then D. I don't know if, is any merit in that?
Thank you. There's the one that's the conflict, which is the referral back, which is D, I believe. And then there's the allocation, I think that's 50% allocation one. Is that separated out?
We'll go with A, B, C, and E.
Any speakers on A, B, C, or E? Okay, let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 12 to 2.
Do we do D now, Mr. Chair?
We'll wait for D to come up on screen. Any speakers to D? Deputy Mayor Hubert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just came up on the floor and the question was raised on the floor, so there's been 24 hours for some reflection on this through you to our city solicitor. Is there any further information that you would bring to us with respect to collective agreement and perhaps Mr. Coxit as well that might suggest that we wouldn't need to do this referral back at this time?
Your Worship, no, my answer would be the same as last night. I believe that the information I provided you is correct and that the matter does not have to be sent back. All the same, I believe that the reason for sending it back was that it wasn't going to delay the report anyway and it could be done.
Other speakers? I'm about to open the vote. Okay, let's call the question.
Councilor Armstrong? Councilor Armstrong?
Councilor Armstrong is voting yea manually.
Closing the vote. And the motion carries 10 to 3 with one recuse.
Thank you, and finally F, Mr. Chair.
Any speakers on F? Okay, it's titled 4 at the bottom of the screen if you scroll down. F. Any speakers? Let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 10 to 4.
I believe that completes the report.
Okay, this is 10th report, council in closed session. Can you move that, Deputy Mayor Hubert?
Can I just comment on the last one?
Okay, comment first.
I'd be, I'll be pleased to put the other report on the floor, but just, I just want to recognize, I didn't want to put it into the debate tonight, but the municipal accommodation tax is really the culmination of well over 10 years of work by members of the industry. Not so much by staff, although tourism staff has worked very hard, but the president of the London Hotel Association, Stacey King, has worked absolutely, unequivocally, tirelessly to get an understanding and to get the hoteliers on board with this. And to her credit, all of the major hotels are on board and the majority of the smaller ones are on board. They see this as very critical to them staying competitive in the marketplace, as does the Convention Center and Tourism London. So thank you for a great debate last night and thank you for supporting this. And with that, Mayor, I will put the report from our session in closed session, reporting progress on the two items that we went in.
Great, thank you.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 13 with one recuse.
Okay, thank you. Deferred matters, there are none. None. Emerging motions? Also none. So, bylaws. Let's just take a quick look here. Okay, we can deal with all of the bylaws together. First reading, moved by Councilor Armstrong, seconded by Councilor Usher.
Your Worship, I just want to bring to your attention there are a number of added bylaws tonight as a result of last night's SP-PC meeting related to the government's working group report. So bill numbers 203 through to bill number 241.
Councilor Van Holst and Councilor Hubert? Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 0.
Second reading, moved by Councilor Usher, seconded by Councilor Helmer. Any speakers? Okay, we'll wait for the vote to come up. We are voting.
Councilor Hopkins and Councilor Zafman? Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 0.
Third reading, moved by Councilor Zafman, seconded by Councilor Helmer. Let's call the question.
Councilor Armstrong?
And Councilor Armstrong is voting manually, yea.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 0.
Colleagues, that's the news and we are out of here. Motion to adjourn. Councilor Van Holst, seconded by Councilor Hopkins. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Thanks for a couple of great, very productive days.